Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm okay. Why do I have this? Oh, that's all. That's for that one or two veteran. How'd that get in the stack?
There we go.
Do we want to wait a few minutes?
I know.
It's not a jet lag, but I feel like I've been driving the dryer. I went through all these confidential things. I don't know whose parking spot is thirteen, but I'm parking it because Jan's parked in mine. Somebody's parked in yours.
I'm parked in mine.
Are you parked in yours?
No, she's parked in mine.
Yeah, you're parked in her.
What? No, I parked in mine.
I'm nineteen.
No, it's not about you.
And you parked in nineteen, so I parked in this.
Yes, you're in the right section. I parked in the wrong right.
You should have the navigator, right?
No.
But no, somebody else.
Who has the navigator?
Some, some random person, because when they pull in.
I was gonna say, I'm in mine.
No, you're one over.
That is me.
No.
No, you're the third.
No, I'm not.
But I didn't park in Holly's.
It's always Holly than me.
What is it?
It's Holly than me.
Right. But that's not.
I'm number two.
Okay. Well, there's an extra, there's a.
Somebody's parked somewhere.
Navigator is in the wrong.
But I didn't park in Holly's.
All right, it's ten oh one.
So I parked in thirteen. I don't know whose it is.
Good. Good morning and welcome everyone. Today's workshop is going to be on the Citrus County Industrial Development Authority. As for our invocation, Commissioner Kennard, would you like to lead us in the invocation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer today again so thankful for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we pray that you would be with us in this meeting, in this afternoon's meeting. Lord, help us to have a great discussion and open minds to listen to discussion from others. Pray that you'd be with us as we go about doing the county's business. Pray that you'd give us guidance, Lord. And Lord, please be with our first responders here at home as well as afar. Protect them and bring them back home safely. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this tenth day of June, two thousand twenty-five. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrett, Commissioner Jeff Kennard, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is presentation by Steve Vann, our Economic Development Director. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. Hope you're having a wonderful rainy morning. Today's presentation is on the Citrus, proposed Citrus County Economic, Industrial Development Authority. Apologize. If we could get those slides up. There we go. So, Industrial Development Authority, exactly what is it? A lot of people hear the word industrial and they automatically go to smokestack towers and dirty industry and things of that nature. But in today's world, industry covers a lot of different grounds. So, in the past, that may have been the, the norm that most people would think of would be of smokestacks and dirty things. But today, there's a lot of different industry that does a lot of clean manufacturing and a lot of new tech manufacturing. And we're gonna touch on some of those things today. But the main purpose of this is to understand exactly what an Industrial Development Authority is, how it's set up, how it, how, what powers it has, and what authority it has to actually conduct business and how it can benefit the county, especially a growing county like Citrus. So, we'll move on to the next slide. Let's see. Industrial development authorities are created for the purpose of financing and refinancing projects for public purposes and for the purpose of fostering economic development in a county. So, think of the Industrial Development Authority as a financing arm, mainly through bond financing. So it can do financial agreements with private industry and also nonprofit industry. So, that those companies, if they're looking to build a new facility, expanding an existing facility, they can, they have an option to go through an IDA by state statute, and we're gonna cover some of those things to show you all the legal background that sets these things up. But through state statutes, it allows the county to indirectly help private industry or nonprofits finance, and it's just a simple financing option. Finance a project to be able to get better terms at the end of the day. Better interest rates, better terms, more flexibility through the bonding, through private activity bonds. And we're gonna cover some of those definitions and what all they, what they all mean and all that good jazz. They're also part of the purposes of an Industrial Development Authority. They study the advantages, facilities, resources, products, attractions, conditions concerning the county with relation to encouragement of economic development. So this is truly a tool for financing projects for economic development, to grow the economic base. There are a total of twenty-three existing IDAs in the state of Florida. They have been around since as early as nineteen sixty-nine, with the most recent one being Wakulla County in two thousand sixteen. So, they've run a, a large gamut of when they've been created. You can look at all these different counties and they all come from varying different degrees of size, population, economic opportunity. I did a little quick synopsis yesterday, broke them down by population. And if you throw Citrus County into this mix with twenty-four counties, we come out as dead center at number thirteen in population. So from a population base, you can see the largest would be Miami-Dade, and then the, the smallest would be Calhoun County. We come out at approximately a hundred and seventy thousand, according to the census as of July, two thousand twenty-four, July one, two thousand twenty-four, at number thirteen between all of those. So, you can see that these IDAs can benefit both, both a large, growing area and a very rural area. And as we go through this, if you have questions, please just throw something at me, stop me. A lot of this can be dull because it is a lot of statutes, it is a lot of legal stuff, but it is necessary to kinda cover this. So it's almost, I, I was joking with folks in the back before, that it's kinda like going through the tax code. It can be very boring, so please stop me.
I got a question.
Sure.
You say there's twenty-three existing, there's sixty-seven counties, that means forty-four are not participating. Why aren't forty-four not participating?
That would be a question for them, but one of the things that I, that we can look at, this is just a tool. This is just another option. It's not necessarily something that maybe fits what they're looking to do. This is just a financing conduit that you can use for varying different types of projects. And I'm gonna get into a list of those different projects. There's also other tools out there that are available, and we are exploring all those different tools and mechanisms for economic development. And one thing that I did notice that, going back to why some of those, the majority of those counties don't utilize the Industrial Development Authority, could be because they use some of those other tools. So it really just depends on what angle you wanna look at. In my personal view, the more tools, the more options you have, the better off you're gonna be. This is one of those tools that have been tried and true, not just here in Florida, but across the country.
Well, if it, if it started in sixty-nine, okay, with the first one, and now it's two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Not too many people have gone for this option. Not too many counties, as you can see. The last one was two thousand sixteen, that's nine years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Did anybody went after this option? That's why I'm wondering, why aren't the other forty-four counties even looking at this option, but we are?
They may have the other options in their, their county. Like I said, there are some other tools that are afforded to counties and to regional and cities organizations that they can utilize. So you would also have to look at how they are set up from an Economic Development Agency standpoint. So here in Citrus, we have, the, the county government controls the County Economic Development Office, my office. That's not always the case in a lot of different areas. Some counties have a public-private partnership with an agency, an economic development corporation. They can do things that the county can't necessarily do, similar to what an Industrial Development Authority can do. Industrial Development Authority is a, is a quasi-public entity, so it's both public and private. So it can be the conduit to do financing agreements with private industry. The county, if the county was to directly do a bonding agreement or a financing agreement with a private industry, the county would be taking on that debt directly. Through this Industrial Development Authority, you're able to put the, the debt, the bond requirements and payments solely on the private entity, but give them the benefits through the IRS code of a lower rate and possibly tax exemption on those bonds for the investor. And then Economic Development Agency can do a lot of the similar things that the Industrial Development Authority can do. Now, they can't necessarily do the bond financing because they're not directly part of, a, a, a sub of the eight, or created by the county. They're just a contract, they're, they're a, a nonprofit that's contracted with the county. But they can do things with similar financing because it'd be private financing. So they can do a lot of different things that, that the county government can't do. And vice versa, and the county government can do things that those economic development agencies, those, those quasi-public or contracted agencies can't do. So.
So this is the first one in a series you're gonna bring to us, showing us different options that are out there?
This is the first option that we feel is going to be a tool, and it won't fit every single project. It won't fit every single company, it won't fit every single opportunity that we have out there. But it is a tool. Currently with, as far as economic development goes with Citrus County, we don't have anything of, by way of an incentive. We don't have anything that could attract or assist or help a company expand or locate to the county. A lot of times when companies are looking to do a massive expansion, let's say we're gonna hire fifty to a hundred people, invest a few million dollars, and increase our footprint, they look to the local agencies, particularly Economic Development, to say, what type of tools, what type of incentives do you have for us to do this year? Because I don't have to do this here, I can go next door and do it, I can go to another state, I can go anywhere. And the same thing goes when they're looking at your area. You might have a great location, but guess what? There's five other locations that I can, I can do the same thing. So, wha, I'm gonna go where I get the, the best impact for my business and where the, I can benefit the county the most as well, but also get some incentive to be there but to show that the county or the area would like us to be there. This is just a tool to help bring that financing in that lowers that, that threshold, that risk mitigation, so they don't have to rely solely on private banks or one hundred percent out of their own pocket. They will pay it back at one hundred percent out of their own pocket through the bond payments that they'll make over the years. But they can get better terms by using a conduit such as an Industrial Development Authority to finance that project.
So like I said, this is just one tool that you've bringing us today, and you're going to be bringing us the other tools that are out there, the options that maybe these other forty-four counties are using?
There'll be some other options. Some will be by statute, Florida statutes, others will just be by general powers that the counties have and options. A lot of them are, they're gonna vary in different effects. But this one is one that, from a financing standpoint, it's one that we have the ability to put together and now, the other ones will take a little more tweaking to, to do. Plus, a lot of the other ones that you'll be seeing in the future may or may not be dependent upon the general fund and dollars of the county, which right now, I know that we're looking at saving money, and it's not the right time to bring those forward. This one, however, does not rely on the general fund of the county. It does not put an obligation on debt to the actual taxpayers here in Citrus County. This puts the responsibility for payment and the debt obligation on the private entity that utilizes the financing through the Industrial Development Authority.
Commissioner.
Sure.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. Good morning. You said that there's, that it's not coming out of the general fund and the risk isn't to the taxpayer. So, if they get better bond rates through us and they're not choosing to get private equity loans on, through the private business, what's the leverage? Is, are we leveraging something with the county then?
No. We're not leveraging.
Usually, you know, with the loan, something has to be leveraged, especially if you're getting a rate, like it's backed by something. So what happens if the loan goes into default? Who pays that?
It's, it's based off of, so these bonds, these loans are based off of the full faith credit and, and rating of the private entity. The IDA is simply the conduit based off of IRS regulations and SEC statutes that say, this is how you can get this type of reduced rate or better benefit and better terms by having a tax-exempt bond. So, you have to use a subsidiary or agency of a public body, which would be the county commission creating the IDA. The IDA becomes the conduit by which you apply through, receive the bond. The, the bonds are sold either in private placement or on the open market, and they're rated just like any other bond that you would go out and buy. So companies put bonds out all the time. And that's their base, that payment is based off of their rating.
And what happens if the loan is in default?
If it goes default, then whoever holds the bonds are gonna hold the asset at that point. The county doesn't own the asset at that point, unless the county owned the asset.
So the Industrial Development Authority would then own the asset?
No.
If the bond, so what happens, again, I'll ask if the bond is in default, if they're not paying the loan, if the entity goes bankrupt?
Then they are beholden to whoever holds those bonds, the private ent, the other entity that bought those bonds.
Well, wouldn't it be the?
It would be, think of it as a bank. Think of it as the bank. So if it's a private placement, they put the money out there, they are paying their, their, their loan, then the, the note holder, the bond holder then has the leverage over the assets that they leave behind. But it's also a risk that you take whenever you are taking, buying the bonds. Whenever that private investor, the, the company, or whoever, firm that buys those bonds, they're also factoring in that risk, which is why they have a bond rating, which is a risk rating. So, the better the bond rating, just like a county's rating, the better opportunity you're gonna have to get your full payment. But if you buy a low-rated bond, you're taking on that risk that you may not get all of that money back.
So, the person that's buying the bond is the IDA?
No. The IDA is the conduit.
The conduit. So it is the private entity getting the bond?
That is correct.
So, if this loan per se is in default, then that entity is still responsible? And if that entity goes bankrupt, is the IDA ever put in a place where they have to repay that or make?
No, not if it is a traditional industrial revenue bond, a private activity bond, that is based solely off of that private entity that the, the company that's making the widgets, if they go bankrupt and they're responsible for paying that, that bond, the IDA was simply the conduit to get them the terms associated with that bond.
Can I help?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you think about, let's say it was a stock and it was initial public offering, so a company would go out, if they could afford to do that, that's a very long process. They go through a, a lot to get to do an initial public offering. So as opposed to doing that, this is a financing tool that there's a bond, much like proprietary funds, if you will. So, they're, these bonds get sucked up into like a global pot of money under the regulations of an IDA, I would say. I'm not specific on that, but I would say they're gonna be put into a pot. They're not going to be a standalone bond just for that, it would be, think of it as like a.
A mutual fund?
A mutual fund. So they're gonna be, it's done through like corporate trust workings and they, they bundle these up, they base those on credit risk, and that's how they determine the interest rate in which the bondholders, because the public is going to come in and buy those bonds. I would say they're probably a tax-free bond?
It can be. The vast majority that you're looking to do through the IDA would be a tax-exempt, and we'll talk about the difference of how those two, whether it's tax-exempt or not tax-exempt. But traditionally, that is the main attractant, is to make those bonds tax-exempt. So on the federal level, you're not paying any taxes off of the earnings of that bond.
It's essentially what happens, is it becomes an institutional investment, and the open market goes out, they, they, you know, a trader sells to somebody and you put it in your portfolio and you get an interest rate off of it. It's, it's, this is a bad example, but if you understand worker, workers' comp, and you go, and you, and you go through a company that writes just workers' comp, that's all packaged in together. It's not your workers' comp standalone, it's packaged together and it's based off of the risk of it.
I get.
So the bonds would be, would be available for people to invest in? So they would be like municipal bonds?
Potentially.
And then would Citrus County people get like first?
No.
No.
So it's not like city, like a city bond or something?
No.
That their people can pay?
No, that's not a, it.
Buy into it?
The IDA can do municipal bonds and things like that, but the purpose of it is to do the private activity bonds or the industrial development revenue bonds. So, when those bonds, when they strike the deals, and, and again, we were gonna touch on all of this, we're kinda getting ahead of ourselves, but you, once you strike the deal, it's all approved, it, the bonds are sold. They can be sold either through a private placement, which means they've already identified a sole firm or investor who wants to buy those bonds and hold those bonds, or they can go out to a public sale, as, as Commissioner Bays had mentioned earlier, and be part of a, a pooled investment for individual portfolios. Now, there's, there's different types of access to those bonds. I think you had mentioned that they, the bonds come together in a big pool and then they, they get sold and all that. That's on the back end. There are different types of financing on the front end of those bonds. There's pooled investments, which the state of Florida does have access to for smaller projects. And then there's individ, if it's a very large project that requires very specific, it, it can be sold on its own, the bond can be sold on its own. Usually those are large, single-issue bonds, then they can be individualized, or they can be in a pool of other funds available.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a question. So then, if we go back to, say the company goes bankrupt, and they've got the building half-built, they got the bonds, they got the building half-built, they go bankrupt because it's taking longer to get this or that or the other. Okay, so it goes back to the bondholders. So the county has to go after the bondholders to get the building built and get it up and running? Or, we get stuck with like a five-seventy-eight on Route nineteen? That just sits there half-built, half-whatever? That's, that's my question.
If, if you have a project that's going through the process, the bonds have been approved, they've been sold, the, the company is now using those funds to go fifty percent through their project, and for whatever reason, they disappear. The bondholders hold the note. They have a li, like a bank, they have a liability on that. As far as that property, I'm assuming if that, that company disappeared, there would be some legal action probably from the, the folks who are owed that money. The county does not have any direct control because we don't have ownership of, of any of those, those bonds. So, yes, in, in one scenario, it is possible to have a building that gets halfway built, but.
It's gonna sit there in litigation for years and years till somebody gets the money to finish it?
But when you're putting these bonds, these packages together, that goes back to the very beginning where before the bonds are issued and sold, and before the review process is done, there's large evaluation of the rating of, to get to a rating on that bond, which determines the risk. But also, the, at the end of the day, before these bonds are even issued, the, the BOCC and the IDA both have authority to approve or not approve. So if there is a consideration that this is too risky for us, you don't have to approve the bonds. If the, if that does happen, then you could potentially have a scenario where a building is half-built and sitting there, and I'm assuming it would be tied up in litigation.
Well, that's what I'm looking at in different sections of Citrus County with houses, where builders actually couldn't get their stuff, the price of the product went up, they couldn't get the money, and we're sitting with half. And I'm thinking about sitting with half of an industrial building. You know, is that what the county wants to look like?
That's not likely, I'm sorry, that's not likely to happen.
Okay.
It could hap, there's always a possibility, I would never say never, but likely is, is more, it's more likely to not happen because of the size of these investments.
I'll give a great example. Babcock Ranch, which is the major development in South Florida, is financed by the Washington State Pension Fund. Space Florida was all creative financing. That, what we're talking about is finding a way to do creative financing that helps us diversify our tax base and provide good quality jobs. It, it, sometimes you have to look at more of an intrinsic return than just the pureness of everything that you're laying out here. This is an opportunity that you can create a way for a business to come into your community that you wouldn't necessarily otherwise get.
Again, it's, it's, this is a.
It's a very, very competitive across, not Florida, but across the United States.
Right. This is just a tool that, again, it won't fit every single project either. This is just for very specific scenarios, and we're gonna cover a lot of those different scenarios. So, I'm gonna jump back into the PowerPoint. So as you can see, there's a lot of state and federal laws, regulations, statutes that govern the Industrial Development Authority directly, as well as the activities and the types of financing, particularly the, the bond financing. So, you have, on the state side, you've got the general statutes, chapter one fifty-nine, parts two, three, five, and six. Part three is the main part where they lay out the counties can, and we're gonna dive at, into that here in a second, where counties can create, the Industrial Development Authority gives the counties the ability to create the Industrial Development Authority for financing and refinancing projects. And part two goes into the Bond Financing Act, or the, the Florida Financing Act, which covers a lot of what the bonds, how they're, how they're treated. On the federal side, you've got IRS codes, you've got the Securities Act of nineteen thirty-three. All of these play into the, the financing in different ways, different realms. All of these play into the, the financing in different ways, different realms. The Internal Revenue Code of 86, we'll touch on that a little bit later as we go into the tax exempt versus non-tax exempt. So it gives guidelines on how, there's a test, uh, that the, the activity meets certain requirements, then it's tax exempt. If it doesn't meet these requirements, then it's non-tax exempt. So getting back to what exactly is the Industrial Development Authority? A lot of what we're about to talk about is gonna be that part three uh, of the Florida statutes, chapter 159, which covers the duties, the powers, the creation, the setup, all those things of the actual Industrial Development Authority. So it is a, an Industrial Development Authority is a public body, both corporate and politic, created for the purpose of financing and refinancing capital projects. We've already talked about that. I talked about how chapter 159, part two and part three are the main pieces. Part three covers the Industrial Development Authority's setup and what it can do. Part two covers the bond financing. An IDA is authorized to transact business and exercise the powers uh, upon the adoption by the county commission through a resolution declaring a need for authority to function in county. So there's two ways that an IDA can be created. One would be strictly by the commission deciding that we have a need for this, that we see that it can be beneficial and we, as the B O C C, decide that we want to formulate, uh, an Industrial Development Authority and, uh, appoint members and move forward with that through a resolution. The second way would be a written submission by, a petition signed by at least 25 residents of the county requesting the commission to entertain and, 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 uh, examine if there is a need for this. So those are the two ways that it can be done, but they're both done through resolution by the B O C C. Um, under the act, which is the Financing Act, an Industrial Development Authority has the power to issue industrial development revenue bonds. As, as I mentioned earlier, revenue bond is a private activity bond. The issuance of each issue of the bonds by the authority is subject to approval and disapproval of the county commission. And we're gonna go through this a little bit more, but and, and at the end, I've got a whole flow chart and all that good jazz of how the, uh, process works. But the way it happens is the IDA takes in the information from an applicant, a particular company or entity that wants to use the financing. They review it, they approve it, it then goes to the B O C C for final approval. No bonds, nothing is issued until the B O C C signs off on it. Irregardless of what the Industrial Development Authority says, the B O C C has final yea or nay. All the meetings of an Industrial Development Authority are public as well. So, uh, and we'll touch on that, it can be however they wanna set it up. But the IDA has a minimum of five members. And they're all appointed by the B O C C and they are part of the initial resolution. They must be residents of, and electors of the county in which the IDA is created. So in this case, they would have to be residents and registered electors here in citrus county. They are not paid, this is zero compensation. The statutes do allow for repayment of necessary expenses incurred while engaging in the performance of the duties. Basically, this is reimbursement for travel and, uh, minimal expenses. All of the expenses that are paid to them are paid through the IDA. They're not asking for the county to fund anything. And we'll talk about how the IDA gets, uh, fees and all that stuff through the financing activities. They serve in staggered terms. The first ones, uh, are all staggered. One member serves for a year, another one for two years, another one for three years and the remaining members serve for four years apiece. They can be reappointed at the end of their term. Uh, if the B O C C decides to reappoint them, there's no term limits. And from that point forward, after the first term, they all serve four years after that. There is a chair and a vice chair that's elected by the, uh, by the members of the IDA. They establish their own rules and procedures. And the chair shall publish public notice of meetings and keep minutes and periodically report to the B O C C. Again, the IDA, once they have their membership set up, they have their regulations, their rules, their bylaws, all that stuff is done, they have regular meetings. They have to meet at least once a year for an annual report and no more than 12, uh, times throughout the year. So basically they can meet once a month or a minimum, as minimal as once a year.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
First off, I'm sorry I was late.
That's okay.
Payroll, um, processing took a little longer than I thought it would this morning. Um, I have two questions here. I was reading, you know, reading to prepare for this and I, it's very impressive and I was rolling through my mind who would be good to serve on this if we go forward with this. And, um, I was wondering, do you know offhand if the members are required to file a Form 6?
I would assume they would have to file the same, I, I, I'm on the Career Source, uh, C L M board, so I had just filed my Form 1. Um, I would think it'd be something, either the Form 1 or the Form 6. They will have to for, file something. Uh, it, it would be one of the two.
Okay.
I'm not, I think the Form 6 is for elected officials, if I'm not mistaken. I, I, I wouldn't.
Yeah, so anyway, I, there's just, some of the folks I know, they, they have other career issues that they cannot disclose things about their finances.
Right.
For legal reasons and so they can't do it, so then they couldn't serve on this. Secondly, so you talked about Economic Development Agency before. Those are, these are two separate mechanisms and they, one does not, it's not one or the other, we could end up with both, correct?
You could have both, but the, again, all of that is decisions based off of the B O C C. So, uh, to give you an example of, uh, an area that does have both, um, I believe it was.
Marion, doesn't it?
Marion does. They have, it's, it was the Ocala Chamber, now it covers the entire county. Um, and they have a quasi-public, uh, relationship, or public-private partnership with the county to do economic development for the entire county and they have an Industrial Development Authority that uses the, uh, Ocala Chamber as its secretary. So its arm, its economic development arm, to bring the projects in and administer, to keep the fees and everything low, expenses low.
So economic development is highly competitive, of course, between municipalities and so a lot of times things are kept in confidence while you're talking with folks and, and trying to bring them in, which is, runs against our, you know, government and the sunshine rules.
Right.
So these are all public meetings. So could you just talk a little bit about the, how you navigate those waters of needing to keep things confidential until things come to fruition, yet keeping the public notified?
Right. So the way that, um, that I see this working, the way that I, I would assume it's gonna continue to work is whether we have an IDA or not, when I'm working with a client, um, I'm under confidentiality agreements with them. N D As, non-disclosure agreements, uh, all that stuff. The state of Florida actually has, because of our, our, our very robust sunshine rules and public information rules, um, for economic development purposes, uh, it's strictly with the county government. Um, if they have an economic development, uh, department, which that would be me, there's a whole statute that's written out in Florida statutes that outlines the confidentiality piece. Obviously, if I'm working with a, a, a client and things like financial records and stuff like that, that's, that's protected regardless. But if we're under an N D A, working on a project and going through the specifics, those things are protected, uh, on a tw- 12-month basis from the point that the N D A is executed, until such time that it either does not come to fruition or it does. So think of fruition as an announcement. That's, that's how I, when it becomes public at that point, because typically before anything is actually, um, really agreed upon, there's, there's really an announcements of some sort. Uh, and then there's structures that are all laid out in, in underneath those N D As that cover all those things. So, um, I envision it working the same way. Is that, my proposal is that the IDA utilize my department as the secretary uh, to keep the expenses at zero. So any project that's going to potentially get financing through the IDA would run through my department first. That way we're all abreast of all the projects that are happening here and things that are, that are going on. And then when the time is appropriate, to begin the process to apply for requests.
Announcement phase, basically?
It may be before, it may be after, it, it.
Do you have like code names for companies then?
We do use code names on every project that we have a confidentiality agreement on. So, but it would be around that, that point, um, going through the, the IDA process, because they will have to provide a lot of financial information, as you could imagine, for the IDA board members to decipher and go through. Now, not all of that, again, can be public record, but the discussions are all open to the public. Once they, they flesh that out, then it becomes to the B O C C and obviously at that point, it's, uh, well more than in the sunshine, uh, for approvals. But, so all the way up to the point where they're going to ask for the money, everything, or, or assistance, everything is, is covered.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we talked about the staggered terms, the chair. Um, again, all public meetings, they'll be posted, they'll keep minutes uh, and they will report to the B O C C, uh, on their activities. So the members themselves, um, the statutes do not give any guidance other than they have to be, uh, they have to be citizens of the county and part of the electorate. There are some counties that have the B O C C members as their IDA, uh, board members. I do not recommend that, because the whole point of the IDA is to have that separation. Any pro, a project that's going through the IDA still needs to come to the B O C C for approval. So I see that as kind of, uh, convoluted to have you, look at it twice and try to put on a different hat when there's no difference. I've put together on this slide a little strongly recommended, uh, background of the, uh, individuals and they would come from industries like finance, accounting, banking, uh, investments, private equity, economics, business data analytics, corporate finance, management consulting, quantitative, uh, analysis, real estate finance, quant finance, anything to do with money, financing, uh, and, and, and building projects. That would basically be where you would want some, someone with that type of knowledge, that type of background, uh, with that type of experience. Because the, the type of financing that's gonna be coming through here, we're not talking, uh, a couple of hundred thousand dollars, we're talking, adding a lot more zeros to that. And there could be other mechanisms involved with the, the financing that are outside of the bonds. There could be private, um, money coming in in form of equity. There could also be other debt financing coming in through other means. And all of that would be packaged together and the bond financing could just be a small piece of that. So they'll have to carve out different, um, assets that would be tied to backing those, those loans or backing those bonds and, and all those different things. So they'll be, it, it would be very complicated. They can, they can get very, very sophisticated with these financing deals. Again, I mentioned that to keep the, the cost as minimal as possible and the expenses and to keep everything uniform, they would be utilizing the county's Economic Development Office as secretary to run projects through it. Cause I already work here and if it's never, I don't plan on being here for the rest of my life. I wanna retire one day, but somebody else would be able to take it over as well.
Excuse me. Commissioner Fagan?
And then would your department, um, I think that if we went on board, we would need to have somebody, and maybe that's you and your department, maybe we, maybe our own H R department, I'm not sure, but I think that we should have background checks done, that, um, you know, for felonies, financial judgments. Um, obviously if somebody is a retired professional and they had a misdemeanor charge when they were, you know, 20, I don't, you know, we, we have to define that somehow, but obviously we wouldn't want any forgery or bribery or financial crimes or financial judgments. You know, we wanna make sure that we have, um, sound individuals and I think background checks would be important for that.
For the IDA board members?
Absolutely.
Yes ma'am. If, if the board chooses to, to wanna make that a requirement, that's, that's more than welcome.
How, how, why would we not, why would we not wanna make it a requirement?
Uh, I'm just, if, if you wanted to make it, that, that's perfectly fine. I don't think anybody would object to that. You're doing due diligence on the individuals that are, uh, appointed there to make sure that they're of sound judgment and, uh, are not, you know, criminals in any way, shape or form.
Would, I mean, would anybody object? I mean, I'd assume the board, you're all on board with that, right? Some background check? So we need to figure out, you know, who that would run through and I guess later you're gonna tell us how the IDA gets money. So I guess they would, obviously, the IDA would pay for the background checks.
And I'm sure that we could probably run, uh, in coordination with the sheriff's office through, to get that stuff. I mean, we, we could set all that up.
Mr. Van, would there be a minimum and a maximum on the bond issuance?
Yes, uh, they, they run in different, it depends on the type of bond and it depends on the activity. Um, you could see them as, uh, up in the tens of millions, it's usually around 10 million, but you can go higher than that, depends on the activity. Uh, and it depends, I've got the numbers here somewhere in my list and slew of notes. I've seen them as high as, you know, in the 20 millions or, or more. It just really depends on the project itself. And it also depends on where the money is coming from. So if you have, again, going back to the whole pooled, uh, project deal, if you, the state of Florida has an allotment based off of population size, all that good stuff. Um, and if you were to do financing through the state agency in a pooled finance for a smaller deal, obviously you're not gonna be, uh, getting 50 million dollars in bond financing. Uh, it would be more along the lines of a couple of million, uh, depending on the size. But there's also, as far as minimums go, uh, and, and you will, we'll touch on it here in a second, but you're, you're looking at anything 3 million or more typically, two maybe, because of the costs involved. Um, you know, there are, when they're setting it up, the applicant is covering all of the fees associated with setting this financing up. So it's not just if we need 5 million dollars in funding, we're also gonna need more money to cover, um, or they're gonna have to pay out of their own pocket to pay for the attorneys to set the contracts up as well as, um, getting the bonds out to market. So they are responsible for all those fees, not to mention that the IDA can set up fees, which I strongly encourage, uh, to set up fees to actually run like an application fee, uh, and then a placement fee as well, to get those out there. And they would cover all of the, the applicant itself is covering all of those fees. So if they need 3 million, you're probably looking at a, maybe a 4 million or 3 and 1/2, somewhere in that range.
I have a question. Okay, the other week you came before us and you said 0.7% of the property in citrus county is set aside for either light industrial or industrial?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so that means whoever comes before has to go before P D C and get rezoning? Or do they get money before they go to rezoning? Because in order to build whatever industrial you're planning on changing our county to industrial, that, um, they've gotta have permission to rezone before they can build? What comes first, the rezoning or the money from the IDA?
The, if we're putting them on existing zoning where for industry, then we're not rezoning anything.
Well, we only have 0.7% of all the property. So that's not a lot and most of that is zoned light industrial.
It's not a lot, but it's also not developed yet, so it's, it's, it's available to build on. At, at this time, there's no need for rezoning unless there is a specific need for whatever, I can't even think of a reason right now, um, as to why a company, when we have available property at this point, why you would need to have, they would have to come with a compelling reason as to why they have to have this specific piece of property rezoned to that, that zoning. Uh, and that would be a very unique scenario. I'm not saying it can't happen, but at this time, I'm not looking to bring in companies that want to gobble up a piece of property in the middle of Pine Ridge and turn it into industrial.
Okay, so.
But this doesn't, this isn't specific just to industrial.
No, no, and we're gonna, I've got a whole slew of different types of projects that the IDA can run through. And I've got some examples of what some other counties have done as well.
Okay.
So, uh, the powers of the authority, this is a, a lot of stuff. Uh, but in general, it is a perpetual succession as a body politic and corporate. As I mentioned earlier, they will adopt by, uh, bylaws. They will adopt by bylaws for regulation and how they conduct their business. They would, they can adopt a seal, they can have an office, they can be sue or sue or be sued in its own name. They can enter into contracts for any purposes enumerated in Sections one fifty-nine that cover the the Florida Industrial Development Financing Act. That was the the part two that I had mentioned that governs the act, the actual financing piece where part three covers the creation of the industrial development authority. The main purpose is to issue revenue bonds or other debt obligations repayable solely from the revenues derived from the sale, operation, leasing of projects, or other payments received through the financing agreement subject to approval or disapproval of the county commission. So they, the the whole point of this is to do financing agreements to help an entity either create or expand a facility. The final approval is always, any agreement that goes through the IDA always comes before the B O C C for final approval. Should the IDA ever just because they check all the boxes, this, let's say it would never happen, but an oil and gas company gets approval through the IDA. It comes here before the B O C C, you look at it like, we don't want this here. You just simply vote no, that you don't want that type of industry. So at the end of the day, the B O C C always has the final say on whether these projects can get financing through the industrial development authority. They can also exercise all the powers of connection with authorization issuance and sale of the revenue bonds. Again, that's all covered through the the Financing Act in part two. And they can acquire by lease, purchase, or option real and personal property. So the IDA can own property, and it can be either tangible or 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 real or or physical land. So that is a interesting key point. You, I think Commissioner Barrett you had asked at one point, could the IDA ever have possession of a facility? It is possible. So it would just depend on how the terms of how they came about owning that piece of property. The way this 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 IDA is set up, it is strictly a conduit and a financing piece. But should there ever be an opportunity to acquire property, again, before it could even do that, if it's a financing agreement, has to come before the B O C C.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Madam Attorney. Madam Attorney, the questions are for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Question number one, Mr. Bayham was saying that the Board of County Commissioners at any point can decide to say, no, we just don't want that type of industry. Is it that easy, or does the attorney come back and say, oh, there could be a potential lawsuit? I mean, do we really, is it really that easy to just say yes and no?
I I don't, I don't think I heard him say that that we don't like that industry, but we can say we don't like issuing a bond for that particular use.
And that's okay.
You could, you always have the final authority on whether or not to issue a bond. The downside that you have to consider is, you know, what investments have been made by the applicant, if you will, before it gets to that point. And sometimes, you know, the decision will be hard if the applicant has, you know, invested a lot of money to get to you. It's kind of like with our land use issues, you know, so much money is invested by the applicants before it ever gets to you. So that's just the consideration that you would have. And and hopefully, no one would have led the applicant astray. In other words, led them down a a rosy path that, you know, oh, I'm sure this is going to be approved. No one, you know, hopefully, no one would do that, but that would be the only downside or your potential liability, if you would, is if somebody made promises along the way.
The my other question is about ownership, and you said the IDA could potentially own property. So when Citrus County owns property, which we do, we don't own it, the five of us, that means the people of Citrus County. When we say Citrus County owns, so when the IDA owns, what does that mean? It's not the people of Citrus County, I would assume, and if it's not the entity, certainly couldn't be the five people.
Could be something like the airport.
It would be similar to like an airport or a port. The the IDA, and it's on one of the other slides, I think it's the one after this, is that's one of the other peculiar things with it, is that because it is a
Can I just pause you because the my question was actually directed, I didn't know if the attorney wanted to answer first because I was directing the question to her.
That the authority, it says to acquire by lease, purchase, or option real and personal property for use as sites for the location of projects. So yes, it, that authority would own the, you're creating a legal entity in this authority. So yes, it would own the property, not the county or the B O C C or the people, it would be that authority.
Thank you.
Yes, it it it, the IDA can be, a- as I mentioned in the fourth bullet here, it's to sue and be sued in its own name. So if it is a legal entity, then if it owned that property, it would own the property. It still wouldn't be against the liability of the the taxpayers of Citrus County.
If they own property, and like who was, who would be paying for that then?
It would be the IDA. If they owned it.
You said that they get money from an entity.
They get money, they get money through the financing, through fees, application fees and and financing fees associated with the being the conduit to have that private entity get the better terms through a tax exempt bond. That's how this IDA is set up to receive any type of funds that it may get.
So if they're owning, if the IDA is actually owning the property, there's probably, there's an entity behind that giving money to purchase the property.
This IDA owns property, again, it still has to be approved by the B O C C if it's a financing agreement. Unless it was a gift, which I would still think that the B O C C would probably have to approve receiving the gift for the benefit of the IDA. If this IDA is financing a project, it's not going to own. If it's financing the project for the benefit of a private entity, it doesn't have ownership in the assets of that project. I don't know if I'm making that clear or not.
Because Commissioner Bay said it would be like a port or an airport, but that would be county property. So that that's, I guess, my hiccup when you're saying the IDA could own the property.
They can, they can own property, so.
Where'd they get the money to buy it?
Through the fees that they got from other projects. So if we if we did a handful of projects, if the IDA did a handful of projects through this, and they accumulated fees over time and built that up, let's say that there's a piece of property that they want to put because they can own their own office if they wanted to. They find a piece of property, they go out and use those fees to purchase that property.
Got it, okay, yep.
Madam Chair. Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner, well, to all of you. If you create this entity, it it's a, it's its own living, breathing entity. So it can, the reason that these powers are listed here is because it's a governmental entity unto itself, once you create it. Think think of like maybe a special district, an independent special district or a dependent special district, it's just like that. You guys have the the library district as one of the districts. Think of like mosquito control or Homo Sassa special water district. This would have a life of its own, so it it could absolutely own its own property separate and apart from what projects it's working on.
And then the last bullet again just emphasizes that the issuance and repayment of industrial development bonds by a lease mortgage or other security instrument. And always, always subject to approval, final approval by the B O C C. So additional key points. And I know these are just statutes, and I'm going to read them out to you, but the authority reporting requirements. The authority which issues any revenue bonds pursuant to this part shall supply to Division of Bond Finance of the State Board of Administration with a copy of the report pursuant to Section one oh three of the I R Internal Revenue Code of fifty-four. Basically, this is saying every year they have to, if they they do any activity, financing activity, they report to the State Financing Board. They have an annual report that they're filing. They're also filing that that same information with the B O C C. They, now, this is another one that that probably have a lot of questions on, levy of ad valorem taxes by the Board of County Commissioners. The statute reads that the exercise and powers granted industrial development authorities is declared to be public and in county purpose, the Board of County Commissioners is authorized and may levy ad valorem taxes, not to exceed one mill. We're not asking for the county to levy any millage or anything like that for ad valorem taxes for the benefit of an IDA. This is not what this is set up to do. Again, we're set up to do financing for for private entities to be that conduit for them to get better rates and better terms. It, the statutes just allow for the B O C C to do it, we're not asking for that. Section one fifty-nine, credit and state political subdivision not pledged. This is the section that outlines that any financing that is done, it is not the assets of the county, the state, municipality, nothing like that. The taxpayers are not obligated to these financing agreements. It says that a revenue bond issued by the authority should not be deemed to constitute a debt liability or obligation of any authority or county or of the state or any political subdivision. And such revenue bonds or debt obligations shall be payable solely from revenues derived from the sale, operation, or leasing of a project or projects or other payments received under financing agreements with respect thereto. It's saying that the private entity that is receiving the benefit of these tax exempt bonds is the sole entity that is responsible for paying that debt. It's not the county, it's not the state, it's not a municipality, it's not even the IDA. It's simply the pass through conduit to get the better rates and terms. And.
I got a question, Mr. Bream.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it says that the county is not requesting any ad valorem tax or funding by the B O C C. Okay, is that going to be in writing, and is that going to be forever? Or are we going to turn around and do like the mosquito control, which is a separate entity? Okay, but it has elected board, where this doesn't have elected board, this has appointed board by the B O C C. Okay, mosquito has its own, they have their own ad valorem, they collect their own money. How can I be guaranteed you're not going to turn around and your person that comes in after you says, well, we need to have ad valorem taxes, and it says we can have them, so we're going to have them?
They don't determine, the person that come behind me or in the IDA seat, they don't have the authority to levy ad valorem taxes. The B O C C has the authority to levy taxes. Whether this IDA is in existence or not, the B O C C can increase the millage whenever they desire. So the B O C C controls the ad valorem tax, not the IDA.
But, okay, we can do the ad valorem tax.
Raise the ad valorem tax in five years from now.
This could be a line item on the tax under ad valorem, just like mosquito control is a line item. Our board does not have much control over the mosquito control, how much they spend. They do their own budget, they do their own thing, and it's a specific millage.
Ms. Lynn? Oh, so so what staff is saying right now is they they don't intend to levy any, or to ask you to levy any mills. However, the statute provides that future boards, future staff may ask the board, and future boards may do it. But it's always under the board's control, it's not some separate entity that controls it. So future boards could absolutely levy up to one mill.
Right, and this board changes every two years. We don't stay the same board. So a board coming in can work with with them and say, okay, we want to levy it. So all of a sudden now, a authority that we agreed to as our board.
But that's board, but that's a, that's a board decision, and boards change, people change.
That's correct.
So you can't preempt what future boards may do.
Well, that's the thing, I want to, before we decide anything, preempt that they can ever.
You can't.
If if I might, Commissioner, whether this IDA is in existence or not, this board can still control what the ad valorem tax is. It doesn't have, the IDA is irrelevant in your your scenario. You can still raise dad valorem tax if you like, whether this thing is in existence or not.
I, yes, but I think you can exceed your, the ten mills, because this is giving you another mill. So yes, you have that authority now, but you'll have an additional mill. Commissioner Kennard?
Even if this board decided to handcuff economic development further in this county and not give them the tools they need to be successful, future boards could set this up and put the miller trade in place. So all he's asking for is another tool to help create career class jobs in this county. It's doing nothing but creating a financing tool for these companies to come in, get into the bond market, get favorable rates, favorable terms, to be able to grow our our economic base in the county. So we can shoot it down, right, this board can, the very next board can say, we want an IDA, and we're putting the miller trade in place. This board is not going to put the miller trade in place for them, they're not asking for it. So let's see if we can move along through our PowerPoint here.
And Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Very briefly, Commissioner Kennard, thank you, well said. I would only add that everybody needs to remember that businesses pay more in taxes than they take in services, which helps save residents taxes. So yes, let's move along, thank you.
The next bullet point just deals with the authority to deal with financial institution which employs a member of the authority. So if there is a an IDA member that is a member of a financial institution that the IDA would like to utilize for financing arms, it is possible that section simply says that that member would recuse themselves from any decisions associated with financing that run through their financial institution due to conflict of of interest. And the last bullet point is tax exemption. As I said, this this entity is both public and corporate, and it can own assets. And being both public and corporate, it does not pay any taxes. So if it owns a building, if it owns a piece of property, there is no taxes associated with that. All right, so revenue bond financing, exactly what can it do? I know I've kind of hinted at it a little bit, and we'll jump right into it. So the main purpose of any entity, a private entity in particular, corporate finance, they're looking to leverage other people's money. Yes, in a perfect world, we would love to be able to have companies go out there, use their own dollars, and they would love to be able to just pay for, I'd be able to pay for a car up front or a house up front, I would love to be able to do that. But in the reality is, we have to borrow money. And this type of financing allows for another option, another flexibility piece, another piece of the puzzle for companies to tap into, to spread the risk, spread the wealth, and be able to build these projects, especially this day and age. These projects get larger and larger and larger and more expensive every day. We see that with our own own county projects, everything that we look at, what cost one a dollar ten years ago is now five dollars or more. So th- this is just another tool, another obligation, a debt obligation that a company could take on to spread that risk and get the project situated. It's it's an alternative, as the PowerPoint shows. The definition of an industrial development revenue bond, it's also known as a private activity bond, I think you heard me say that a few times, they're an alternative financing message, method that has two types, it's either taxable or tax exempt. So and I promise you, I'd I'd give you a little bit of a taste of how the how they're determined. And so it's got to meet a couple of different criteria. The bond must be issued by a state or local government, and this is all according to I R S regulations. The bond must be issued by a state or local government or an authority acting on its behalf, the IDA. So that's why the IDA is the conduit. The request comes into the IDA, it's now eligible for tax exempt bonds because it's going through a a entity created by a local government. The government is technically the borrower, but the bond proceeds are loaned to the private entity. So that's the conduit that's going through. To be qualified as a private activity bond, there has to be at least ten percent of the bond proceeds are used by a private business, at least ten percent to be considered a private activity. And to be tax exempt, the bond must finance a qualified project. So you're asking, what is a qualified project? Under the Internal Revenue Code, federal law that qualifies a tax exempt bond, it can be a manufacturing facility, which includes a facilities that make tangible personal property. It can be a five oh one C three nonprofit such as a hospital, school, or anything else that falls under those those rules. It can be a solid waste disposal or recycling facility, an airport, a dock, or wharf projects. Or and there's a slew, a twenty-seven or, and there's a slew, a 27-point list of different types of projects that can qualify under the Internal Revenue Code. It also has to meet the, the TEFA, it has to go through a TEFA hearing, which is Tax, Equity, and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 82. Basically, if it's approved by the local entity, it's got to meet those criteria. So, there is a, based off of all the statutes that I'd shown, federal and state, there's a, a slew of different criteria that these things have to go through, to meet all of these rules and regulations. So, these private activity bonds are securities issued, again, by a local entity, local government agency, for the purpose of financing capital projects for the use by private business. And the debt service on the bonds is paid solely by the revenues and payments by the company. Again, it's not subject to county debt or tax dollars in any way, shape, or form. Now, this is a lot of different stuff, but again, I, I wasn't quite sure how into the weeds everybody wanted to get with these things. But, the, the, the bonds are consolidated, limited, as special obligations, government units, there's some capital costs that can be incurred. And as the attorney had alluded to earlier, if, you know, with any land project, or with even with industrial projects, sometimes there's costs incurred upfront before they get to the actual sign, seal, deliver financing piece. And that's what this second piece does here. It, it can, up to 25% of the bond funds can be used to acquire land, cost of construction, demolition, new machinery, interest on borrowed money, the cost of engineering consultants reimbursing. So, you can see where some of those, especially the engineering consultants, would be an upfront cost that they would incur. But, the key with a lot of that is for these bonds, they would have to be incurred within a 60-day window prior to the actual approval, so, by the IDA. So, and, and there's a couple of different agreements that, that, that line that stuff out, but if it's outside of that window, or before that 60-day window, if it was that day 90 before the approval date, it's not eligible. So, goes back to what Commissioner Davis was asking, is like, when does this become public? It's probably at that point, whenever they start incurring the cost, is when it starts to become a real open book of what's going on. They could be exempt through the S C C registration, as we mentioned, we talked about that, how they can be tax exempt and non-tax exempt. Number six there, the smaller issues, I, I mentioned earlier, the $3 million is usually a, a good range, two to three, it used to be two, today it's more like three. Or privately placed with larger issues, maybe sold through private placement, or at public sale. And it goes back to what we talked to earlier, they can either be placed, when they go through this process, on the back end, who, who's going to own the bond. A lot of times, the smaller issues, they might have a private placement, they already have somebody in mind that are going to buy it, or they're going to go through public sale. So, usually the 3 million or less, or, and, and they're kind of tough to do those 3 million, under 3 million. Again, repayment guaranteed solely by the company's ability to cover the risk and the financial strength of the company. That's how they get their bond rating, that's how they're going to determine who's going, if somebody's going to be interested in buying the bond. If we go through the process before the IDA even approves it, and then they, they realize, "Hey, look, this, their risk rating's way too high, we don't even think we can get anybody to, to buy these," it probably won't even make it through the IDA approval process at that point. Because then you're taking on, that company's going to be taking on too much risk that we're going to be putting it out there, and we're, we're just wasting money at that point. So, some of the projects that we can do. Again, this is an economic development tool. Obviously, we want to do finance, manufacturing, and, and things that pay high-quality jobs and wages, but you can do a lot more with these. Manufacturing industrial plants, research and development parks, warehousing distribution facilities, corporate headquarters, tourism facilities, convention and trade shows, urban parking facilities, trade center, healthcare facilities, which is a huge thing here in Florida. All my research has pointed to a lot of, a lot of areas are helping out with both public and private hospitals and, and healthcare facilities. Motion picture production, preservation, or rehabilitation of certified historic structures, which is something that's very unique. Airport and port facilities, which, we have two airports here, that, we could come in handy with financing specific projects there. Pollution control, hazardous control, water, wastewater facilities, correction detention facilities, you, you see the list. Now, this very last one, public restaurant lodging facilities, that would be for public parks, that is not for private hospitals, or anything along those lines. That would be if the county has a park, and we want to put a 30-word RV park there, then we could, or a lodging facility of some sort, a camp, a hotel, whatever the case may be. So, that would be eligible, but it has to be a public piece. The... Trying to think anything else. Any questions? So, you see the versatility that, that it has as far as the types of facilities that it can help finance. Give you a little bit of an example, a lot of people ask, "Okay, you keep saying they're going to get better terms." If you look at the example here, we do a $20 million loan, X Y Z company, over 20 years, annual payments on a conventional loan would be 211, and the, and interest expense at 8.5% is 2.2. And then if you look down below it, you get a, a better rate, usually about 2.5, 3 points better than what you would get on a conventional loan. And then you look all the way down at the savings, especially if it's interest, tax exempt, the total interest savings for the company is over a million dollars over the life of that loan, and that's $50,000 a year. So, you can see, obviously, the larger the loan, the better the, you know, better rates you're going to save. But, even with it not being tax exempt, at the end of the day, that, the tax exempt actually makes it easier to sell the bonds, because the buyer is not paying the, the taxes on, on the earnings. But, the lower interest rate, even if it is not tax exempt, you still get better terms and better rates, because, than you would if you had to go to the conventional route, and go to a bank or another lending institution. So, you can see where for our company, it's very attractive, especially for a large project and a large investment. All right, so, put it all together, the timeline. How long does this thing take? So, as I mentioned, we alluded to before, the applicant comes in, they work with our department, they want to look at doing financing for a large project. They fill out an application, we go through, they submit it to my office, we go through some analysis, then we agree, if we say that, okay, it will fit, bring it before the IDA. The IDA does its analysis, they go through all the financial requirements and all the o- other interesting things, it is a public meeting. If the IDA says no, the process stops right there. If they say yes, then they enter into a memorandum of agreement, that basically, that's, that's that agreement that would solidify, okay, if they've done some work prior to this, consultant fees and things like that, that would allow for those things to, to, to kind of kick in. These are tentative terms. This is the IDA saying, "Okay, we've reviewed your application, here's our, here's our tentative offering." This is setting the table to bring it before the, the B O C C for additional approval, which then, if you see, the next step goes to review by the, the county commission. If you say no, the process stops. If you say yes, then they go to negotiate the sale of the bond through the financial institutions. A lot of times, as I said, if it's private placement, they may have somebody in, in mind already that's going to buy it, or it would go to a public sale. The bond documentation's drawn up. This validation piece at the end here, usually for tax exempt bonds, a lot of times, they will want to go through validation. What that means essentially, and here I am, I had it written down, probably passed it up, I wanted to give you the technical term for it. Validation refers to a legal process by which a, a court confirms the legality and enforceability of the bond issuance before the bonds are sold. So, that goes back to a question that you had earlier, if a, a project goes halfway through, right? The validation just is a reassurance that this document meets the criterias, that who's going to own what at what point in time, as far as the bond financing, and what happens in those events. And it also gives, it makes sure that the bond issuance is lawful, a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions kind of go through this, especially with new companies coming in, and they're, they're, they're very shaky. And sometimes, depending on the, the type of bonds, it can be required to go through that extra step of validation. It does make the process longer, but it gives everybody reassurances that this is all on the up and up, and it's, and it's legal. So, there's, as you can tell, there's lots of criteria that need to be met, that's governed by state statutes, as well as federal laws and regulations. Again, you know, we're not the first to, to, to look at something like this, and we would not be the last. This is just an option, this is a tool, and right now, we don't really have very many tools to work with. And it, this, this gives us something that we can put off to, on the shelf and off on the side, that says, when we have a project comes in and they need some assistance with finance. Because going back to the, the acreage that we have, and the property that we have for industrial use, it's all property, it's all land. It, stuff's going to have to be built. We don't necessarily have 250 square foot of warehouse space just sitting there, ready for somebody to walk in. So, they, these new businesses, these, whether it's an expansion or a new business altogether coming in, it, something's going to have to be built from the ground up. And should they need assistance with some alternative debt financing, this is an option that we can have ready to go to entertain that. So, any additional questions?
Commissioner Barrick?
Okay, you gave us counties at the beginning that adopted this. One of them is Gilchrist, they've had it for 14 years. I'd really like you to look through and send me the information, as to, how many projects in the 14 years have they done? Also, the newest one, Wakulla, is nine, is nine years. How many projects have they done? And then you've got our sister county, Marion, okay? They've been in existence 48 years. I'd like to know how many projects they've done, and what they've done. Marion County is not a nature coast county, it is more industrial every day. And I keep hearing residents of this county say, "We want to keep the nature and nature coast." Is this going to keep the nature and nature coast, or are you going to be projecting that we're going to become industrial, like Hernando, and Pasco, and all the other counties that are now industrialized? And to me, I need to know answers to these questions before I can make any decisions, you know, have an authority, don't have an authority, have an authority that can actually charge up to one mil, that would go on to property tax people, and that could go on the property tax, you know, it says, it's not going to affect the taxpayers, but it could, okay? Depending on who's on the board, depending on what the board at that point in time decides. And that's an ever-changing, every-two-year thing, you know? Maybe this board will stay for the next six years, I don't know. But, the thing is, you know, we can't live, we need to know what actually can happen. And that, to me, is, these are things that can happen, okay? And, and I want to know what projects, 44 counties have not adopted this. Why is it 44 counties have not adopted this, if it's such a good tool to put in the tool belt?
I didn't say this was the best tool.
No, you said it was a good one.
I said it's a, it's a good tool for financing. As far as the other 44 counties, as I mentioned early on, I can't speak to them, I would have to research every single one of them individually, to see what they have and what they don't have. I'm here in Citrus, and I've analyzed what we have and what we don't have, and we don't have anything.
No.
So, this is the first step in one side of the equation. This is a financing option. This is, this is not something that's going to come in and run roughshod, and try to buy a property, and change it all from residential to industrial, even if it did try to do that five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, the B O C C still has 100% authority over if that zoning changes or not. This is simply a, a tool to finance projects. The other side of tools that we would be looking at would be incentive, truly incentive-based. It would be things along the lines of hiring individuals, and paying a certain wage, and giving a credit. All of those types of things are going to be based, come out of the, the county's coffers. That would come out of the county budget, which is why we're not introducing that now. Because we, we're taught, we've been, over the last several months, we've been talking about, you know, putting restraints, and, and bringing in, cutting expenses, and finding extra money in the county budget, so that we can do road infrastructure projects, and water projects, and all the other needs that we have. This is a tool that we can use that doesn't put any strain on the county whatsoever. Now, as far as the other counties that have an IDA, and what projects they've done, the other three, I can go dig and, and find that information. I found some right off the top of my head, not every single one makes it easy, they have to file annual reports, but those annual reports are financial reports, they're not necessarily listing out each individual deal. Some, some present that, some don't make it as easily available in the financial statements, so I would have to go dig through all of those, and I will do that if you'd like.
I'd appreciate that.
Go dig through those three, and find those, what projects they've done over however many years. I can tell you, the three that I pulled up right off the top, heavy, heavy, heavy leaners towards projects in the healthcare industry. To give you an example, Orange County, every single project I'm looking at on this list, which they have a large list, and this was as of September 2024, every single one, I think except for one, was in the healthcare industry. Hospitals, regional healthcare systems, Orlando Health, Adventis, Adventis Health Facilities Authority, Presbyterian Retirement Community Series, I think is the only one that wasn't, and I'm, it may be in the healthcare industry. Martin County, which is another one, that was on their website, right there, ready, ready to go. Out of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 projects that they've had last year, only one was non-health-related, and that was Stewart Web, it was a commercial printing facility. And then Hillsborough County, again, they actually, a lot of, they, Tampa General, St. John's Family Limited Partnership, Goodwill Industries, as well as private schools and academies. So, it runs the gamut on the type of projects that you can finance, but a lot in Florida are based on healthcare industry. I will get with my partners out there in Martin, and see, Marion County, see what they've done, I will see if I can get ahold of someone at Gilchrist, and see what they've done, and the other one you mentioned?
Okay, it's Wakulla.
Wakulla, okay.
Those are the, you know, Marion is close to us, but the other two are the ones that they accepted it the least time ago. In other words, one was only 14 years, and one was only nine years.
Yeah, I actually did reach out to Wakulla County, but I have not heard anything back from them yet. But, I'll, I'll do everything I can to get you a list of what all they've done, and how they've been active. I, I, I can go back very, some of these go all the way back to the 70s, so...
Well, that's why I only picked the two that were after 2000.
Commissioner Canard?
Madam Chair, Steve, before we wear you out on, on chasing down different rabbit trails, each of the five of us can reach out to our counterparts, we've got the list of counties that have these. We can reach out to our counterparts in those communities and ask, "What has, what has your IDA done for your community, what kind of projects have you done?" So, any of the five of us can, can do that research. I do not want you chasing down the other 42 counties who haven't done this. I would much rather you spend your time researching additional tools that you can bring to the public, bring to the county commission, and say, "Here's another tool that you can put in your economic development toolbox." Citrus County annually ranks in the top three or four of unemployment-ranked, unemployment counties in the state of Florida. We have got, we hear the constant complaints that the only job's available, which is not true, the only jobs available, or the majority of jobs available are service-related in jobs, we need more career class jobs, that's exactly what you're bringing to the, to the board as tool number one. I would rather you see the limited amount of time that you have pursuing additional tools. What are other counties doing that are successful? Bring those tools for us, and if it's the right tool for Citrus County, we're going to put that in your toolbox, too.
Anybody else? Commissioner Davis?
He, he said it first, but I was going to say pretty much the same thing, and also, any of us who are going to Florida Association of Counties this month, is an excellent opportunity to talk to your fellow commissioners face-to-face and learn more about this.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I guess you're looking for consensus. Where I am is I concede the value for the tool, besides people wanting to keep the nature coast, that is important, but people want jobs and good healthcare, especially, I, I have neighbors that say that some were considering leaving, but then they hear that the hospitals are expanding, and that's why people stay, too, so that's very important. As far as taxing in the future, of course, it's going to be a concern to citizens. I truly, I know, I say it all the time, I still like to believe government... I still like to believe government should work as government should work. And if the people, when we're not here, 20 years from now, or 10, or even next year, whenever, if this is created, if the people don't want this to ever tax or add, they need to really make that known to the people that are running for office, and I believe that's where that stops. It's the people of Citrus County that speak out. So for us, creating it or not creating it, that that's not a barrier to me. I think the people of Citrus County tell us what they want, whether they want to put money to it or not, and that's what we do. Where I, where I think we need a little work is when this was first presented, you gave us, you know, the thing to vote on or sign. I don't think we're ready for that yet, because if this board is the board to implement this, I think that we need to really lay out who, you know, like I said, background checks and things like that, and really dial in who, because I think that's, if we're the ones to set up, we really need to get it right for the future, too. So there might be five stellar people that would come on board, but what happens 20 years from now? So we really, we need to get that document right of how this continues on. So we want to make sure that the right people are in place, you know, to represent us. So and and just make sure, and I'm sure Madam Attorney can help with that, too, to make sure that we are not going down the wrong road. My questions were just based, I wanted to protect the people that we serve. I was worried about, you know, if anything goes wrong, I wouldn't want backlash on the people that we represent. And what I'm hearing from you today is that wouldn't or couldn't happen. Am I correct in in understanding that?
If the tool is used the way that it is intended to to be used, and which is the conduit for financing, which is why we're not asking for this board, or as long as I'm here, not asking for ad valorem tax in any way, shape, or form. Because that's not what it, what the purpose is. The purpose is just to be an option to finance economic activity. I I don't see, just by virtue of the basic format by which this this tool is used, I don't see that the taxpayers would be at risk in any way, shape, or form. I I'm trying to think of a way that they they could, but other than not liking the project that would be presented to the IDA.
Well, I thank you for taking a pause on everything and putting together a presentation and a workshop because this answered a lot of questions, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Chair, or Ms. Lynn, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. So how how do you envision, when I look at this flow chart, you've listed legal and financial analysis, and you've got memorandum of agreement. How do you envision legal representation for this entity when it's created?
So there are, I I would propose that the IDA contract with outside counsel that specializes in this to, and a lot of times, it's the private entity that requests specific counsel to draft the the agreements.
So so you're not going to need our office to review any of the documents or?
The only time that the this office would be required to review any of these documents is when it's brought before the board for their final approval of whether or not they want to proceed with this or not. And again, even after that, they have the validation period that you can request to make sure all of that documentation is on the up and up through the court system.
So so you're you're saying that this entity is going to have its own counsel?
It will have its own counsel.
How are you going to pay for that?
And that will be paid for by the, it would be paid from the private entity. They they pay for the request to have this process and to get the benefit of the tax exemption.
Right, but the the day-to-day operations of this board, the making sure the the agendas are published, making sure that the, so you're going to do that without any legal help?
We're we're going to have to set it up and get it, get it moving without that. I it's, I I don't see where the legality of it is going to be. Until projects come in, I don't see where there's a need for.
So for each of the boards that the county has, name them, you know, code, PDC.
Aviation.
Aviation, you know, all of those boards. Someone from my office represents that board. We look at their agendas. We look at their publications. We just make sure that they're, the board itself is operating correctly, the the crab board, the, you know, all of those boards. We, so I'm just trying to find out what, you know, what they're going to, what this board is going to expect from us.
I think today what we're doing is we're looking for consensus that will give him direction to continue moving forward, and then we can work out all these details. That's, that's how I see this. And if somebody sees it different, then please speak now or forever hold your peace.
I see it different, because legal fees are legal fees, and they're separate. If she's not going to be in charge.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Barrett. Right now, today, we're looking for a consensus on if we want to put a tool in our toolbox. The details, we're not voting to do anything. We're giving a consensus to give him an option to put a tool in our toolbox. All those details will come back.
But he's telling us it's not going to cost us anything, and now it really is going to cost us.
I don't think that's why he's.
Have an attorney, or they have to have an attorney, at least to start it off.
It's part of doing business. It will be, we have them on staff. It will just be another, if something comes forward, they'll review the documents, do the publications like they would do for any other. It's just putting a tool in our toolbox.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
My consensus is yes. Go forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Consensus would be to move forward, meaning to start working out some of these details. So it sounds like you're going to need to have some conversations with our attorney, and she'll probably have some questions. And then figure out some of those finer things. I would like to see this to be a full board consensus. But I think that is part of moving forward, Commissioner Barrett, to get some of those answers to the questions that you have. And I had questions, too, and I feel like most of them got answered today, so I thank you for that.
Do you have my consensus? Commissioner Barrett?
No.
Commissioner Canard?
Don't think so.
I see that you have a consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward. You have three minutes. Anyone? All right. Close open to the public. We are going to, not adjourn, we are going to. Oh, so I do adjourn. Okay, so we're adjourning the workshop. Thank you for coming.